Okay, next we go to City Manager, item A, "Former Fire Station: Extension of Exclusive Negotiation Agreement." Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The City of Camarillo entered into an agreement with the Archdiocese of Los Angeles to allow the Church to further investigate the former fire station located at 2472 Ventura Boulevard for use as church offices and to discuss and negotiate various issues related to the possible sale of the property. I have in our packet a letter from Mr. Tom Dwyer, from CBRE, Commercial Real Estate Services, who is representing the Church. And, Madam Mayor, given the comments we've received repeatedly from Mr. Lorimer about, you know, getting this deal done, I think it would be appropriate for me to read this letter in total, so please bear with me. This is addressed to me, City Manager, the reason "Time Extension Request Regarding Former Fire Station." Dear Dave, My client, Roman Catholic Archbishop of Los Angeles, FBO St. Mary Magdalene Church, is making good headway on determining the cost to restore the former fire station in Camarillo adjacent to the Church property. We have engaged home biotesting to provide asbestos testing of the exterior stucco and interior plaster of the former fire station. We are waiting for this asbestos report, which we expect to receive the week of July 9th. In addition, we are awaiting pricing from our general contractor, Parker Brown Incorporated, which we expect to receive the week of July 16th. Since the beginning of our discussion and throughout our two extension periods, the Archdiocese has acted in good faith to conduct due diligence investigations necessary to determine whether a reuse of the former fire station will be economically feasible and sufficient for the Church's future needs. Given the building's age and condition, issues have popped up that require continued investigation. With the assistance of RGSE Structural Engineers, Main Street Architects and Planners Incorporated, Pacific Environmental Company, and Scarlett's Landscaping, the Archdiocese has invested approximately $15,000 in the process thus far and is close to completing its due diligence. We appreciate the City's patience and assistance with the Archdiocese's completion of its due diligence. Based on the above, the Archdiocese is requesting an additional 60-day extension in order to review and understand the reports and pricing and prepare a thorough cost analysis to conform with the spirit of the appraised value. We believe that we are making reasonable progress towards the finalization of discussions or negotiations of terms for a term sheet. With this in mind, we find it necessary to make this additional request. Please feel free to contact me with any questions, so forth, and sincerely, Tom Dwyer. Based on this letter, which I find compelling, we are asking for another 60-day extension of the original agreement, plus another City Manager-authorized 60-day extension if needed to finish negotiations and discussions towards the term sheet. That concludes staff's report.
Are there any questions? In the staff report, I guess I have a question. It says, page one, big page one, 1, 2, 3, 4, third paragraph under "Discussion," we're just being asked to approve one 60-day extension. It doesn't say one more.
No, it's one 60-day extension plus another, plus an additional 60-day extension, as approved by me, if needed.
Where does that say? Where does it say that in here?
Staff finds this request reasonable, given the age and condition of the building. It recommends the City Manager be authorized to approve one 60-day extension to the amendment to ensure discussions or negotiations of terms of a term sheet can be completed. So, when you look in the agreement, under item F, the Church has requested that the City agree to further extend the agreement. The purpose of the First Amendment is to extend the negotiation period in Section 2 of the agreement for a period of 60 days from the date this First Amendment is signed by the City Manager and to allow the City Manager to extend this First Amendment by one additional 60-day period upon the City Manager's determination that such an extension is warranted and necessary in order to finalize discussions or negotiations on the terms of a term sheet. And this is similar to the process that was used in the original agreement and the process that's used in all our ENAs.
That answered my question. Other questions?
That was my question. So, I'm just at comments whenever you're ready.
Anybody else have a question? Mr. Kildie?
So, just refresh my, so is that, you know, potentially extending it for one 60-day period and then potentially another 60-day, or is it just 60 days?
It's a potential 120 days.
Potential 120, okay. All right.
If needed. If needed.
Can you tell us, I'm sorry, I have a question. Can you tell us the total number of days, then, that this, we have been under exclusive negotiations with the Church?
Starting years ago. Starting whenever it started.
Okay. In the first agreement, we had 120 days as the base, as the base period, and then there were, then two 60-day extensions were then granted.
But that was for doing due diligence. How long have we been dealing with them exclusively?
Exclusively for that original 120 days?
No, that's for due diligence. It's been more than a year that we, two years, that we've been dealing with the Archdiocese on various things, and we have an exclusive agreement for negotiating.
I think that the first, was the 120 days an exclusive negotiation in the two 60s?
Then two 60-day extensions.
Due diligence, is that?
No, it's all the same thing.
When we had all these people in here, it was more than a year ago.
It took us a while to get.
Before we ever got to. That's what I'm talking about. How long have we been dealing with them? And a lot of that wasn't an exclusive negotiation period.
No, it wasn't. Actually.
There's just nobody else?
Yeah, it took us some time to be able to get to the exclusive negotiation agreement with them. And so, there was a period after the crowd was here that we were working with them and trying to work out an agreement for an exclusive negotiation agreement. So, a time had elapsed before we actually got to the formal agreement.
Okay. And just, may I, sorry? The Church represented by Mr. Dwyer is only asking for 60 days?
That's correct. I'm asking for an additional 60 days after that, if needed.
So, we'd then be at 360 days. One year.
One year. Any other questions?
I have a comment, but I don't know if you want to.
Okay, no other questions? I have a member of the public who'd like to talk to us on this, Matt Lorimer, on Fiber Home, it says?
What'd you say?
It looks like it says you want to talk to us on.
Oh, Firehouse.
Oh, Firehouse, I'm sorry.
I should have wrote it clear, sorry, Charlotte. You know, when did this start with negotiations? Two years ago. In fact, when I ran with Kevin eight years ago, Kevin told people, "We'll have this wrapped up in a year, it's going to be gone." He told people, "Leisure Village, it's going to get wrapped up." I was there. I mean, you guys have had this for 20 years, negotiation for two years. He's asking now for 120 days instead of 60 days. I mean, at some point, people at home got to ask you a question. You have property, you bought it for a restaurant, you've been sitting on it for years, okay? And now, you've been in a process for two years. You're telling me, Mr. City Manager, it takes you two years to look at a building, decide whether they're going to buy it or not? I mean, you know, this isn't Disneyland, this isn't Fantasyland. You know, when you tell people things, you're politicians, you're supposed to, the buck needs to stop with you. This is like a little ridiculous, okay? It looks like you're holding on to Firehouse because you're going to attempt the restaurant theme again in the future. I don't know, Mr. City Manager, what are you, what are you planning? But the point is, you've had two years. My God, what do they need to do? Are they going in with x-rays, or what? They got the Martians checking out the building, or what? I mean, seriously, it's ridiculous, two years. Put it up for public auction. I said that to Jan. When I was out one day, she came over, I was getting term limits, she said, I said, "This has been going on long enough." And I said, "You guys need to put it for public auction." And you know what her response was? "We need to control what's in there." Are you kidding me? What do you think? Well, you approved apartment buildings on one side of the town, so what worse thing are they going to do? Build apartment towns or residential, or what are you going to do with it? The bottom line is, the Firehouse is in really bad condition. And whose responsibility is it was? Yours. You had it for 20 years, and you neglected it. You didn't fix the roof, so it deteriorated. And now, you're pointing, "Well, we've got problems, we don't know if we're going to sell it." You know, I mean, what the Church is really saying is, "Give it to me for a dollar." So, the taxpayers are out money. I mean, that's what it sounds like to me. This sounds like you're going to come back, Mr. Norman, and say, "We should give it to them for a buck because it's going to cost half a million dollars." You know something? Put it up for public auction, whoever has the highest bid, set it at a bid of 350 or half a million. Stop making excuses, stop running this. It's ridiculous. At some point, okay? He's the City Manager, you gave him an increase. His job is to manage. This isn't called managing when you want another 120 days. He'll come back again and go, "Well, we need another 120 days, we'll take it for another 120." I mean, at some point, grow up. You guys are grown adults, it's time to put it for public auction. Done. Put it up, highest bidder, set a bid, be done with it. That's what you should do. That's called responsibility. It's called leadership. Thank you.
Your Honor, I think I need to say something here. In response to the suggestion that it be put up for public auction, that would be illegal because the fire station is included within our Long Range Property Management Plan, and there are specific provisions within that plan regarding the disposition of this property. This property was purchased with tax increment during the years that we had redevelopment agency, so we cannot just put it up for public auction. I have been the City Attorney since 2001, and I'm very familiar with the history of the fire station and the significant efforts that the City has made over the last several years in an attempt to sell this property for a redevelopment purpose. At one point, there was a potential restaurant that was going to have an interest, it was American, I forget the last part of the name, and they did have an interest in putting a restaurant there, but then the recession hit, and then redevelopment was dissolved, and as a result, they withdrew their interest. The City has had conversations with many potential purchasers of the fire station. The most recent conversations have been with the Archdiocese. And it has been the Archdiocese that has been requesting of the City additional time. There has been no foot dragging by the City. The City has been very diligent in dealing with the fire station. I know that I have, and Mr. Norman has, reached out to Mr. Dwyer many, many times to find out what the status of their work on this project is, to encourage them to do so promptly. So, this is not on Mr. Norman, this is not on the City, this is not on the City Council. This has been an effort that the City has been undertaking for the last several years. And the problem is, it's a difficult piece of property, there's access issues, it is in bad condition, it has nothing to do with the City. So, I think that a lot of the suggestions that were made here, that the record needs to be made straight on this.
Your Honor, I'm just glad he brought out the fact that it's illegal to do what he was suggesting. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Kildie?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment here, and as most people know, we've been working on this for a long, long time. And it's turned out to be a very complicated transaction here for many, many reasons, not the least of which, the building is decades and decades and decades old, and we've got an applicant that's trying to save it. And that in itself becomes extremely complicated, and all we have to do is go back to the Camero Ranch and remember how long it took us to rehab that, and quite frankly, the cost, it was a heck of a lot less than when we first started talking about it than what it ended up. But I think it ended up the really nice asset for the City. Now, as far as the Archdiocese goes, I think the City has done its due diligence with them. Just like the City Attorney said, there's been many, many proposals before this, none of them have gone very far until we got the Archdiocese that is very interested in this, and they have been for years and years. And what has slowed it down is many things, and one of it, it's with the Archdiocese and situations that are beyond the City's control. I don't want to get into exactly what it was, but it was an unforeseen situation that we had to deal with. It put us back a number of months in this situation. They have spent some money, several thousand dollars, to see if this will work. We have given them several extensions, and new things have come up that we didn't really foresee that were going to come up. So, this is as close as we've really come to really making and seeing if this will work. Yes, I've been talking about this for a long time. I don't think anybody up here is thrilled that it's taken this long, of course they're not. But it would seem to me that it would be appropriate for us to grant this next extension. However, whatever they need to decide, that seems to be ample time, especially if we allow the City Manager to give them to an extra 60 days to see if this thing will work. And I know it's going to be discussed in the coming months, but it looks to me like we're on a track here. I'm hoping we can push it through the goal line here. And with the background that we've got in this, the time extensions we give this, and I do think the applicant is a very legitimate applicant that is really trying to make this work. My feeling is that we do grant them this time with the caveat that, look, this should be ample time to whether you're going to be able to make this thing work or not. And if that's, we have to go to another phase of this, we're very experienced about going to a different phase in this and getting it done. So, that's my suggestion.
Mr. Trent, Tremblay?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So, I've been at this for about 18 months. Thankfully, not for 20 years. I am frustrated by the slowness of the due diligence. I want, I hope, that this transaction proceeds and the property goes to the Archdiocese and to St. Mary Magdalene for a whole variety of reasons. It makes some sense, and we've already had that discussion. But I also understand that the due diligence process here, assessing the existing building, can take some extended time. And echo what Mr. Perrick says, and the ball is in the court of the Archdiocese. Based on what, based on the letter that we've received and my understanding, the Archdiocese and St. Mary Magdalene are acting in good faith. So, I'm supportive of another extension this time. Beyond that, I may not, I may not be. I'll leave it at that. Think about it critically, though. So, what's the alternative? Is the alternative here, don't grant the extension with more due diligence pending and throw this right back to square one? I'm not willing to do that. It seems to me that the prudent thing to do is to, hopefully with this last extension, with the other potential 60 days, and I'm supportive of that, is get the due diligence done and find out whether or not we can make a deal or not, and go from there. But suggesting in any way that you cut it off at this point, which is what the logical import of folks who say, "Get it done," that just means, that to me doesn't make any sense. So, I'm supportive of this. I think Mr. Kildie is correct in his characterization, so I'm supporter of his comments and where we're going on. Staff recommendation.
Before I ask for more comments, generally speaking, once we start council comments, we don't take any more public comments. We did receive a card just now while Mr. Tremblay was speaking for another member of the public who would like to speak. So, do we want to hear from somebody else, or continue with our comments?
I think we'll hear it, yeah. I think we'll hear it.
Okay, Terry Bray?
That's fine.
I'm still Terry Bray, I still live at Lamplighter in Camarillo. But in regards to this issue, it sounds to me as if the building and the condition that it's in, as it was built, and how it continues to deteriorate, seems to be a big fly in the ointment of being able to move forward on both sides. So, as far as lack of funding from when Mr. Perrick said that there was redevelopment funds, and then that kind of went downhill, or didn't become available, or they were taken away, I think by Governor Brown, or something like that, you still have over $300,000 of CDBG funds. And $300,000 of that was voted on and approved by you to do some exterior improvements to apartments that are seen by the freeway because you feel that they look outdated. So, with the money that you have on hand, that, I don't know, maybe you'll end up using it on my place if community housing services runs out of money with the funding that you just approved, that you seem to be ignoring a source of funding that you have that can be used to either make updates to this building, to make it so they can take possession of it. But the other thing is, is that it's really appalling that this boarded-up structure is seen by hundreds of thousands of people that come off of that freeway exit. And I know that you want to have the City look as good as it can, but that is a super eyesore, makes the City look like crap, and, you know, it's not obvious to the people that come into town, especially for Fiesta or whatever, as to really what's going on, as to why that building is not being taken care of. So, I look at it as, if it's not working the way it is, or if the policy doesn't allow you to deal with it, you have the power to change the policy. Nothing is written in concrete. You have the ability to be flexible and change things that aren't working, but the length of the time that this has been going on is appalling. Yet, the construction and the development that's going on in the City is rampant. It's just going at a huge, fast pace, and that this one little simple structure is sitting there for decades. It doesn't make sense, like Mr. Lorimer brought up. But the Camero Ranch House, yeah, it took a long time, but now it's a fiscal disaster. So, you know, you want to make sure that somebody who's going to take this building is really going to make good use of it. It's a great compliment to the Church that is there, I don't think anybody debates that. But if it's an asbestos issue, which I think was a problem with the restaurant or anything else, do what you got to do with the funds that you have, make the building inhabitable, get it to the Archdiocese who wants it, they're going to treat it right, it's going to make the City look better, and move on. But you don't have to stay stuck in the mud from where you're saying you have these limitations. You have that flexibility.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else with any comments?
I have a question following up for that, if the City Attorney might address whether we could use CDBG funds for this project?
I don't believe so. Perhaps Mr. Mo can weigh in on that.
No, CDBG funds for this purpose would not be prohibited, or would be prohibited under HUD.
Thank you. Would have to be, I guess if you're making it housing, maybe.
A comment for me?
This has been very frustrating for all of us, and one of the comments lately in the last speaker was, "We can change the policy. Oh, if we could bring back redevelopment on our own, wouldn't that be wonderful?" So many of these things that we're having to abide by are state laws imposed upon us. So, there's, sometimes whether we'd like to be flexible or not, it's not within our ability. I would agree with the previous council members who've spoken that we're so far down this path, you can't stop now and walk away from it. The one thing that I might suggest differently is that the Church or the representative is asking for 60 days. So, rather than automatically, basically automatically, giving them 120 days, I would suggest that we give them the 60, that's what they asked for, and then at the end of that, bring it back to us instead of giving the almost automatic 120 days, because you add that up, I mean, we are talking about almost a year under an exclusive negotiation, and that is a long time. That would be my suggestion, is just to simply give them what they asked for, 60 days.
Mr. Morgan?
There's an old saying, patience is a virtue. Camera House looked terrible for a long time, even after we bought it, but we fixed it, and someone just said it looked quite bad shape it's in. That Camero House is in fantastic shape.
Fiscal shape.
Huh?
The foundation's in fiscally bad shape.
Okay, it's not. It's not fiscally bad shape either. It's in good shape. Now, main thing is, we went through that, have got a beautiful asset to the City of Camarillo now. Tons of people here, weddings, everything, go to that house. We had 2,200 people show up the other day for the truck thing that they have once a month, the food truck thing. There was a band there that was fabulous. So, we had 2,200 people show up, and it was great, it was a great performance. Anyway, that's turned out to be a true asset for our City. This is what I think will happen with this house, given its time, there's no other option right now. I mean, we'll tear it down, a lot of people don't want it torn down. We don't have any other option right now. We've tried everywhere to sell it to other people in the past, and so, we have no option. I think if we just wait, it's going to happen. I'm frustrated just as much as you are. And we sit here long, you have Tony going through this, and I know what you're talking about. But I think we're right on the verge of having things happen. And he will probably bring it back automatically if he needs an extension. That's what he normally would be. It's not just automatic, another 60 days. I think he'll talk to us about it first.
Hasn't in the past. Let me ask the City.
If he doesn't, I'm going to ask that he can bring it back.
Well, let me just ask, because in the past, for the other two 60-day extensions, you did not bring it back, if I remember correctly.
No, that's correct. Authority was given to the City Manager to extend.
So, if we approved it as you requested, and as in the resolution, or whatever this is, the agreement, the First Amendment to the agreement, then that would be automatically extended, it wouldn't come back to us?
Right. If I felt that it was necessary to extend for 60 days, to wrap up negotiations, to bring you a deal, I would do that.
Would you not talk to us on the side or otherwise to tell us what's going on?
If he wants our opinion on it, we'd have to bring it back.
I think that he need, yeah, I know. I'm just saying to you, sometimes he'll tell us things through memos and stuff, what's beneficial and why. And he alerts us to the fact of what's, you know, what's causing that to happen.
There is one thing.
I would want that to happen, yes?
There is one thing I should mention. What it says is that the extension by the City Manager can be for a period of up to 60 days, so.
Up to, yes.
It doesn't necessarily need to be 60 days. So, for example, if they're very close at the end of the first 60 days, and they just need another, you know, week or two, then a full 60-day extension would be necessary.
I'm sure he'll tell us, you know, what's going on. It's not just going to be, let it wander, and, I know, I have more patience, I mean, we're more confident than Dave, alerting us.
Are those your comments?
No, I didn't say he's going to tell each one of us to tell the others. He always gives, you know, they'll give memos about what's going on in the City.
I'm just asking.
Now, so, why did you mention Brown Act? That is not even close.
You just have to be careful.
That's not even close.
Okay, Mr. Morgan, I'm asking.
Anyway, what I'm trying to say to you is that be patient. We're going to have a nice place there, once they get it rolling. And I think the Archdiocese, Kevin mentioned the part about, they had some problems, we know about them, that were hard to predict. And now, it's rolling. They're testing the building, they're doing a lot of things. And so, I think they're going to move forward. That's all.
Could I clarify one thing, or ask, I'll ask it as a question, but we keep comparing this to the Camero House, and the Camero House is basically public, for public use, public, belonging to the City, being public access. This is destined, as I understand it, as being offices for the Church. So, this isn't going to be created into being a public space?
Well, that's right. If it's sold to the Archdiocese, then they would own it and operate it for office and related uses.
Yeah, I think there's more than office. I think they're doing some food share stuff there, too.
Yeah, I don't know the details of that, I don't think we've gotten that far into it, but I know offices are one of the uses.
Other uses.
I have become extremely frustrated over this, and my whole frustration didn't just start with the exclusive negotiation, but before that, because I think it was like three years ago that all those people were here. And we waited and waited, and we've waited on the Archdiocese for a long time. My preference would be one 60-day extension, and that's it. But, of course, if three council members want a 60-day extension with another one, with the City Manager to have the ability to have another one, that's fine. But I will tell you, if we go 120 days and it comes back, I will vote against it. I think that sometimes you, just things have gone on so long, there's, everybody says, "Oh, we have to be patient, it's going to happen." If they find too much in this building, they could pull a plug on it, and we could, we would be in the position of having to start all over. But I think they need a fire line under the
Your Honor, along those lines, I would make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the First Amendment to Agreement, to Agreement Number 2017-96C regarding former fire station between the city and the Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Los Angeles, St. Mary Magdalene Church, with the change that it be simply a 60-day extension.
Is there a second? This changes what is in the packet in the First Amendment to the Agreement.
Can I make a comment before that? Would the individual that made a motion, would she be willing to consider a 30-day extension? And I just say this because, let's say, if they really...
Let me ask first if there's a second, as it was said, and then... Okay, apparently, there's no second. So, now, Mr. Kildy?
So, I'm going to ask the... I don't... Let me just make a statement here. Would there be interest in approving a 60-day negotiation period with one 30-day extension for the simple reason is that if they get up to 58, 59 days and they just need another week, that give them 30 days, and that should be ample time, in my opinion, to whether or not it's going to work or not?
Well, since there wasn't a second on my first motion, I will make that my motion then to change the agreement to include a 60-day extension with an additional 30 days at the discretion of the city manager.
And to be specific, in Section 2.2 of the amendment, which is a big Page 4, the last couple words there say 60 days, so the 60 would be changed to 30.
Is there a second? Okay?
There's a second.
Okay?
Actually, no. I have a question.
So, no, I guess it's more in the form of a comment. So, what will happen over the course of the next 60 days at least minimally will not just be a completion of the due diligence, but an expectation that a negotiated, completed term sheet will be finalized for presentation to the council. Remember, we've got two, as I see it, we've got two components here. We've got the completion of the due diligence, the asbestos testing, the structural engineering, all the stuff on the physical part of the building. And we've got the negotiation of the term sheet, which, in my experience professionally, can also take some time. So, that's why I style this as a comment. My expectation is that we would have both of those items done within the next 60 days, but allowing for a 30-day extension at the city manager's discretion.
For a total of 90 days.
For a total of 90 days, and I'm willing to go forward on that.
If I might. In reading their letter, I think that's what they're saying, too, isn't it? That they talk about the term sheet being completed.